We're going to have a public transportation plan for view and adoption. So are we adopting it to move it forward to the city council? Or do you just need a vote from us?
This is, you guys have the jurisdiction to adopt plans for the city. So this is it. I mean, it's going to go to city council for endorsement, but you are the legal authority for any plan changes to the city. Yeah, it's going to go to city council as well, but it'll be an endorsement.
I thought we were all just recommending, because they had three committees recommending.
Not on a plan.
It was like the sustainability plan. We were the people who had a vote on the sustainability plan. That was us as well. Good.
Isn't it all somehow related to the master plan?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And were you on the city council?
Yeah, and she's got various plans.
You guys didn't vote on that. I don't think you ever even voted on it.
I think I was.
Yeah, I don't think you ever went to you guys. Maybe you had a hearing, could hear it.
Well, we endorsed.
You endorsed, yeah. I don't think the city council even took a vote, so. Are you doing the presentation?
I could, but Devin was intimately involved.
Do you want to talk about it?
Yeah. And so if you don't, I have a couple of extra copies. If anybody needs one, some paper copies.
So the plan was originally brought to the Transportation and Parking Commission by one of the members of that commission that has been nominated by the mayor to sit on the Public Transit Commission, you know, working with PPTA. So Leslie Stein presented it to that committee and that, the Transportation and Parking Commission voted to, and at that point, as I understood it, they voted to recommend it to the city council for adoption. And then there was some discussion about whether that needed to go through exactly the same process as the municipal transportation plan. So this is the public transit plan. It is a companion to the municipal transportation plan. And both of them, as city elements, fit under regional plans done by Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So the Public Works Commission also voted to forward it to the city council with the recommendation to adopt it. So we would be the third committee doing that, although as I understand it now, we can actually vote to adopt it. I would urge us to do that. I've read it and been following it. It has some minor changes to it. Basically, the plan breaks down into two pieces. One is a goal to increase service on the existing eight PPTA routes that run through town. And increased service to them would need to be increased ridership by increasing the, you know, ability to get to the bus stops or have more flag stops. But basically, those routes would just, they're looking to grow those routes. But the second piece of it is to add service, and that's their second goal. And first on that list is adding transit service to the survival center and the YMCAT. And that's the piece I'd like to speak to. I'd like to take the opportunity to communicate a strong message to PPTA that the survival center clients need their service. The Pioneer Valley Regional Transportation Improvement Program shows $4 million next year for a PPTA bus rolling stop, which would be new buses, along with substantial carryover funds for mini buses, hybrid buses, and vans. So I'd like to urge PPTA to earmark some of those anticipated resources for service to the survival center and YMCAT. And by way of underscoring that need, this past Monday, the center served 67 families and distributed 3,790 pounds of food in one day. And that food, and that weight of food, goes out of there sometimes on bicycles, sometimes in cars, sometimes on foot, but it doesn't go by bus, and it shouldn't.
That was interesting, because when they're in that temporary location, the old car dealership, it was great.
Was it, did the storm really?
That's an unusual day for them, but this is headed into a season when they do actually give out more food. But I just think it's a missed opportunity for a population. And Leslie, who I sit with on the Transportation and Parking Commission, has made the point that it's not ideal to carry groceries on the bus, that that can be problematic. And some of the bus drivers actually don't like to do flag stops for people holding a whole lot of bags. My feeling on that is that's beside the point. Those are the very people that need it. And if you, you know, so you take more family members with you and you can get your food home. But I just.
You've never been to New York?
Yeah, exactly.
Or anywhere else.
Yeah. I see this as an opportunity to make a plug for that.
How responsive is the PVT?
PPTA.
PPTA, sorry.
Well, I was happy to see it in, I mean, they, I'm digging up these resource numbers out of regional planning documents. The plan is optimistic, but until someone says you've got another van or a bus that you can put in service, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to be pessimistic. It's in the plan as a goal, and that's the top of the list.
Is this just, is it kind of a theoretical plan? I mean, where is the money going to come from to do all this?
Well, when I'm looking at the Pioneer Valley Regional Transportation Plan is where I'm getting the 2012 numbers from. And those are federal monies, and, you know, it's an accumulation. And like I said, some of that is carryover money that hadn't gone already. So there are resources flowing in. I don't have visibility to how much or whether they're going to buy extra buses or something. But, I mean, I think we ought to be focusing much more on public transit than cars. So this is a chance to make that statement at the city level.
I think if you, you also noted earlier on that one of the goals is to modify the language in the zoning ordinance to just highlight an emphasis in the site plan approval section, so that's on page five, about making connections. So the board then, if it becomes adopted in zoning, at least it would be front and center in terms of creating connections to existing transit or likely future transit, which you already do, but it's not, it's not specified in this language.
They asked for the same thing in special permanent, too. So, I mean, it's just, we already do that, but I think it was a recognition that it wasn't formal in the.
And sort of going back to the financial piece that Catherine raised, you know, the plan, in terms of objectives, it could be much stronger in terms of things that might pursue to create a financial stream that would actually result in being able to expand routes or expand, you know, the number of buses in the system so that you can, it becomes a usable system instead of just for between Smith College and UMass, because it's not really usable in terms of a, it doesn't function like a rail transit system.
No, it doesn't. It goes to the VA, it goes to between the public colleges and crosses the river to UMass. But, I mean, it's, it's a pretty limited system. And as far as the plan goes, it looks like to me that it's not, it's not reaching far enough. I mean, I would like to see us begin to start talking about a, you know, a central transit facility in town that might be tied to the railroad and might bring in bus service there. Those kind of things are everybody's sort of thinking about in the back of their mind, but PPTA didn't make a chance to mention that in a, in a plan.
Did you guys talk about the transition work, you know, what that would mean and where it would go, or how that would be served?
I don't know whose purview it is to talk about that. Carolyn could probably answer that better. I mentioned in the last meeting that I had heard a briefing at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission about the train activity funding that has come in through Connecticut is sort of taking the lead on getting that as far north as New Haven and then on up west into eventual, but, and there's a lot, I mean, there's millions of dollars already in the system churning along. They have a snag on the bridge over the road.
The Connecticut?
And so that rail bridge is not.
The one that the FIC has on? Farther north, because I don't think they reuse that bridge.
Well, I think maybe that's the point.
Really farther north, though.
The Hartford High Deck Connecticut Bridge is the one unfunded piece of it right now. Everything else is funded and, you know, I mean, to the tune of 73 million, you know, 647 million total cost, 471 million have been identified and made available. I mean, so there's a lot going on from that south, and they're actually using that as a combination of Amtrak plus commuter service, too. So they're adding stations so that it's more viable and competitive.
One of the mayor elects interests is to move forward and pretty quickly and try to determine where those stations are. So it's going to be on your agenda, and certainly our office is looking at the permit location for where multimodal or some connect, some close proximity between bus and train will be. So we're starting to look at sort of the common places downtown.
I was really surprised to drive through Greenfield the other day and look at how small they are with theirs. And it's a major facility.
Just waiting for the train?
No, no, theirs is not a, theirs is a combination bus service. It's intermodal.
Is goal number three was on for future intermodal transportation, so it will include rail as well? So that's right up there, and that's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there anything else, anything else that you want to call out? Because the reason I was confused about the PTK's input, because remember we did the office buildings on, next to the Clarence at five or 10?
Yeah.
And we had them put in a bus stop, but the PTK wasn't there. Or we had them, when we did Cooley Dickinson, we had them put in on the other side, not on the Cooley Dickinson side, but with the convenience stories. But again, PTK, we had them build these bus stops, but PTK doesn't necessarily mean they're going to.
They're not going to use them.
Yeah, or stick a bus there, so.
I think Leslie's a pretty active woman on that committee, so maybe we need to, I mean, I don't know if that's the mechanism we all use, but she's, the mayor's appointed delegate to the PPTA.
Yeah, because even, you know, and Linda Manor, you know, we've talked, there's, you know, they don't have a bus stop up there on either side of the road. You know, so there's definitely places that, you know, as projects come up, we get them to, we get them to build the thing, but we can't make PPTA come.
Does the bus that goes through, that goes to Wingsworth go through the leads?
It does, it goes right by the.
It does, I mean, it doesn't mean the town towns don't.
Oh, no, no.
It goes right over.
Right over. Yeah, but, but there's no sheltered stop. I mean, there's a lot of people working in Linda Manor, a lot of people visit Linda Manor, and there's no sheltered stop on either side of the road.
It's about to get bigger.
And it's about to get bigger, so.
So who is in charge of PPTA? Are they just by themselves?
It's a state entity. Maybe it's public funding, so that.
It's a separate authority. I mean, it's.
Like a board authority or any other sort of transportation entity there.
So they're basically all by themselves?
They did come to some meeting, somebody from the PPTA, I can't remember when it was, who came, it was years ago.
Is it private or public?
It's public, yeah, or it's like not in like the housing, it's separate.
They're born, it goes like NIH. Well, and this is the document, the regional document that I got for funding numbers out of for the next few years.
So basically, so what, so you all need to hold a public hearing before you officially adopt plans. So this acts as your public hearing, it was, you know, advertised as a public hearing. Didn't really garner much attention.
Well, are you, are you here to speak to this particular issue?
No, I'm just observing.
Oh, okay. And you're observing.
Well, you know, it's funny, it didn't really garner much attention based on the King Street, you know, folks who complained about transportation to the survival center, right? You know.
Well, and there was a whole group of people that visited the Transportation and Parking Commission recently about.
Yeah, the lack of.
Sidewalks and services.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly didn't do outreach and public hearing for this, but most of the work has been done by Park and Transportation, so.
I mean, it.
But you all have to hold the official.
Yeah, they do.
Well, we got rich when they were putting those together?
I don't know, you can ask Catherine.
No, it was presented to the commission by Leslie, and I think everybody sort of felt like we are now, it's like, oh, okay, good idea.
I'm sorry, who's Leslie?
Leslie Stein is the city's delegate to the Public Transit Commission. There is a, it's not PPTA, but it's some sort of they and other entities from their service areas.
She was on Sustainable North Hampton, too, representing that.
Yeah.
I have one clarification question. On page four, there's this objective number three, use IPS equipment at the bus stops?
Yes.
IPS equipment?
Yes.
What's IPS equipment? I couldn't find that anywhere.
Intelligent transportation systems, and it would be so that I could pick up my phone and tell me how far away the bus is. So it runs a virtual link to transportation progress around.
Great company, bigger cities now.
Yeah, you say.
And they're, they're definitely, PPTA is looking to do that, they know they must.
You know, I still see, I was driving by Sheldon Field, I remember when they redid those parking lots as the commuter spot. And I'm surprised the number of people over there are waiting for the bus.
That's always, that's always a first.
Right.
That's a bus stop.
Yeah. Well, any other questions or comments for Devin? So we could vote to accept or adopt.
Adopt it as part of the overall sustainability plan and as an element of the transportation plan that was placed in the.
What's the next thing before, what's the next thing you guys are going to look at? What's the next thing for your committee?
We feel, we're on our 16th traffic column of the West.
My wife said there should be traffic column, column. That's everywhere. Well, it's traffic column.
They do, and it's, in some ways, a little frustrating because for almost all of those presented cases, even if there's a strong, you know, we go out and do an analysis on speed and traffic and, you know, look at the sort of measurement numbers about it, but in most cases, there's very little we can do because to really be traffic column, you redesign the street.
Well, they did the temporary speed bumps in front of the FIC.
And if they did them just recently down on Rigger Side Drive.
Yeah.
And we got, every time we put out the temporaries, we get mixed reviews. If they're right in front of your house, you hate them, and if they're not, you love them. It's that simple.
Well, I think what they said, too, is every time they do a speed, they'll look at that in terms of is that the time to do it?
It's sadly not really the best test. The verbal ones are a little coarse. So, you know, I always point to the ones over on Jackson Street and say, you know, that's the right kind of building, it's a really nice one.
It's pretty spate of them.
Did they, on Con Street, did they, okay.
Well, on. Still Con Street, I don't think.
Well, they just redid Con Street, so I'm wondering, did it put speed bumps in there?
No, but that's a state project. And we did have some input into, you know, curb cuts and pedestrian crossings, and they said it, that was a good one.
Well, they narrowed the road, too, didn't they? So that was one of the reasons that was narrowed.
That was slow, naturally slow.
Frank?
On Graves Street.
Speed bumps there?
Yeah, they were, they put in temporary ones for some time as an experiment, and now they're permanent ones in there.
Where is that?
Graves Street.
Graves Street.
It's like, it's like a cut.
I can't do the 67.
Graves is actually a dead end.
We saw it to be a part, between the snow and the.
When they first put them on drove, they were still, they were actually still painted black, and you couldn't see them. So, whoa, was that a surprise?
It shouldn't have been going so fast.
Never did that again.
Well, I'm sure if you go 30 miles an hour, still living in the town. All right, so we need a motion to adopt, or actually, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Wait, I've got a question. So is a public transportation plan, there's also municipal transportation, right? And should they be, is that confusing? Should they be combined?
Well, it's almost, the name is confusing. Public transportation is really public transit, so it's, it's really the.
The transit is public.
Yeah, it's the, it's the bus public, you know, as opposed to the municipal transportation plan covers, you know, multimodal and, you know, how many, how to handle my car and your car and all sorts of things.
Sidewalks.
But one thing that we have succeeded in doing is taking the public transit plan through the same cycle of committees. In other words, we didn't shortcut this one. So we've taken it through all the same committees that the municipal planning through, so they really do have the same, they're stuck.
Anybody else, any other questions?
I'm moving to close public hearing.
All in favor? Do you want to make the motion, Devin? Your plan?
Sure, Frank is going to second it, but I move we adopt the public transportation plan, and send it to the city council for their consideration.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, Frank, did you actually just vote?
They were.
Did you vote? I want to make it, you know.
Thank you.
No, thank you, that was good. The minutes, we have one set of minutes to do.
And I may have one more.
We have one or two things, plus I want to talk about the, we have, this is the only meeting in November, I think we were pretty heavy.
Except for next week, it's the special meeting.
Oh, I mean, but, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to go over it, so.
I didn't mention this to the agenda, but if people want to hear what happened in the CBA class, I'll be happy to tell them.
Okay, so let's do the minutes first, and we'll do the other stuff. Any comments on the minutes, this is the minutes from the last meeting?
Sorry, there's a meeting this week?
The 16th is the one Wayne about.
The zoning changes on Con, the map changes or the very, like, the institutional uses, the map changes on Con Street, and their neighborhood meetings. So we're going to do one of JFK and one here.
Yeah, it's a little playboard meeting. It's what Wayne sent us an email about.
Check here.
I think Catherine said she couldn't make it.
One is 5:30, five o'clock.
Yeah, we're doing a back to back, one back here, one up JFK.
Yes. It's my teacher's thing, so it's hard for me to get that.
All right, so let's just do the minutes, we'll do the other things. Any comments on the minutes, from this, the minutes from the last meeting?
I have one comment, and I listed as present, but I didn't come. I was like, came an hour late because I was pre-cute for that.
Frank, you got any comments on the others?
Yeah, delighted.
To get them to the next meeting? Huh? To get them to the next meeting, one meeting later?
Yeah.
All right.
Couldn't actually remember.
Get up, go back.
That's the next.
Get up, go back, you're delighted.
He's delighted.
It's been a long time.
All right, who wants to make the motion to approve the minutes?
Wait, wait, you have seconded by David Wimber?
No, that's supposed to be, oh, that's my computer. It automatically inserted.
Wow.
Oh, I thought it was a joint meeting or something.
I know, and that, but in fact, it wasn't.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Good stretch.
Well, I got another, other interlaced. You were supposed to have read it already.
I did, I did skip right over.
You skipped a month.
I did, I was supposed to have been a joint meeting.
All right, five, four, three, two, one. Anybody?
I'm moved to accept the minutes of October 27th as amended.
Seven.
All in favor? All right, so we have reported CPC, we have, let's talk about the 16th, meeting on the 16th.
And then I have street acceptance.
Street acceptance, and let's talk about the first meeting in December. So let's do street acceptance first.
Yeah. So Mass Development has submitted for street acceptance, oh, maybe a year and a half ago, on, and I have copies of this, I'll send it down, one, two, three, four. I'm just going to point out these, I need to share, over here on the side.
If we just say no.
What are we accepting? Well, it's a street grid at, at State Hospital, so a little while ago, Village Hill, all the way to its current terminus at the Hammerhead was accepted. And they put in for a request for street acceptance for this Olander section, plus the cross, this is Mojer, and then Mucanti up to this point, is what they're requesting in this latest round. That was their second subdivision up there. And then the third subdivision, which is built, but they haven't submitted a street acceptance request yet, is around this, the loop, the bungalow loop. So that's not on the table right now. So the October 29th storm, the 30th storm, really took them by surprise. They certainly wanted to get street acceptance done before the snow fell. So there, this is, it has, the status is, well, any request for street acceptance is done, is approved ultimately by city council, but it first gets a recommendation from Board of Public Works and then Planning Board, before it goes back to city council. There were some little minor, well, minor in terms of the adjustments that Mass Development had to make on the, on the plans, the asbuilds they submitted, but major in terms of the technical information the city needs to have for a street. And they just finally got plans to DPW Tuesday, but the request went to Board of Public Works last night, Wednesday, and Board of Public Works did vote to recommend approval of acceptance of the streets, provided that everything that they submitted Tuesday meets the standards. There are three, from the Plenary Board's perspective, up until the snowstorm, there were three trees that did not get replanted, and they have a map of the section of Mucanti here. There are these three trees that need to be replaced. They replaced a bunch of other trees that we did a walk through and they were going to replace. It couldn't get to these three. They're asking for street acceptance, and what we should do is if city council wants to accept it, is contingent upon them coming back in spring and planting it. They need to, then would need to get permission from DPW to the city right away because at that point it'd be owned by the city to plant those trees. Yeah.
Do you, is there a process to have them set aside earmarked with ripcord funds for that, or is there any leverage?
Well, the interesting thing is Mass Development already has this huge bond out there for developing the streets. So we do have money, we do have hooks. They're going to come in for, for crossing in probably January 1st, so they're still moving forward, they're still.
Those are the huggles?
No, no, the next street segment, which will connect the bungalow.
Oh, the top.
Yeah, the top of that street. So we still have that, which is unlike other subdivisions. I don't think in other situations we would accept a street without the trees being completely in. But, but I want to add to that, since the storm last week, some other trees have been damaged to the point they probably need to be replaced. So instead of having the city on a hook to replace the trees, which is not going to happen because of all the other trees that got damaged, my recommendation to the board would be they have to plant these trees they noted on the plans, plus any of the ones that were damaged from the snowstorm.
So is the re, the rush because of, there might be more snow?
Well, there will be more snow this winter. And they don't want to plow the street.
Lots?
They don't want to plow, so once they don't have, once it's out there street, then DPW is going to be burning it.
This section right here is identified with five lots that are not filled, and that's a piece of the street there, one.
They are now filled. This arboro is a year old.
Yeah, this is a way, a lot of houses.
Yeah.
One of them wins.
And Johnson.
And Johnson. And didn't I hear, the Realtors, God, he's still something there?
No, he's moved.
He's gone with you, right?
The nicer neighborhoods. So that, what this means to the city is we take over plumbing and maintenance of these roads. They become public ways, because right now they're still technically private, right?
Private, right.
And then the, do you guys, will you have to go out with them to identify which trees are damaged enough to be replaced? Who's going to make that determination?
I would have to do that, based on, I mean, I went out with them before the storm and we flagged all the trees they had to replace. Now, I haven't been out since.
Right, because we're, if we, if we move to approve this, we're going to approve it without knowing, you guys are still going to have to decide.
Right. What you could say is you could recommend to city council they approve the subject to replacement, these trees there, even about, plus any trees that the city deems necessary to be replaced.
Yeah, I want to make sure that there's something, something that we don't get in this endless argument of, you know, you said this tree, we said that tree. Right, so I'm not aware. Anything else we should be aware of that, I mean, does the city have the money to plow these trees?
That's kind of where I was going with my question about fill the lots. So the premise here is you create taxable lots, and that creates income to the city, and therefore then the city has the resources to extend itself to do more services. Is that about right?
Well, yeah, I think in the big theoretical world, I think, but, but no, I mean, I should think.
I was going to say, this particular one has been on the, in the planning, I mean, we've known. I was gonna say, this particular one has been on the, in the planning, I mean, we've known this one, there's bigger issues around private streets that we plow anyway, for reasons that aren't probably necessary access to.
Well, and I think the overall, for Village Hill, it was always anticipated, this was gonna be a public street network. This is the next big project. Now, if we're talking about the ridge way out of West Ham, you know, at the West Hampton Line, that's a different, that, and, and.
Right.
And D P W as an office has consistently recommended to the B P W not to accept streets. You know, when the subdivision's out further, it hasn't always, I mean, city council has typically gone against that recommendation. But D P W has always said straight up, when someone comes in for subdivision, we're gonna recommend, we're not gonna accept the street. And so it sort of puts the owner, the applicant on notice that, you know, it's not necessarily gonna be a slam dunk. City council has pretty much accepted most of the recent streets, Ice Pond and Cardinal Way and, I don't.
And there's a good reason for that, and people, they pay taxes, and there's no reason to be petty and refuse to plow the street.
Well, and the service of fire, and I mean, there are reasons.
Exactly.
Well, and these streets were, as Marilyn said, we all knew this was gonna happen. This isn't a surprise. Right, and these were well-built streets, they were built to the specs, and wild. This is, this was the division, the subdivision that we've had, the city itself has invested tons of time and energy, and so, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't not accept it because of the money, but it, you know, it's, hopefully, there's gonna be a lot more houses there soon, that we're gonna get a lot more money for.
Well, you also get more bang for your buck, buck in terms of plowing, because it's slightly more dense. So when it does build out, you're, you're accommodating many, you're, you're plowing for many more residents than we would be out.
We had some public streets up there, so the services are next door, so.
Any other issues besides the streets then? Is there anything else we should be aware of?
From the planning board's perspective, that was my, from the staff perspective, the tree plantings were the only issues that I was holding out for. And all the rest of the stuff has really been technical stuff, where the bounds are located, you know, where, where the radius are correct or not correct.
And they already voted?
They voted contingent upon the plans being what they.
Right. Any other questions on this? Concerns? So, I think the wording that Carolyn said for the, the condition was that the city deems to need to be replaced, not.
It is currently, it is identified.
The ones that we've already identified, and ones that subsequent, we've identified based on the storm of October third. And we think, and you think in January, we're gonna get the next piece of this road? So I think there was one probably to talk about, I think, December.
Right, we pushed them off, and they said.
Why are they doing it piece by piece like that?
That's how they operate. I don't know, we'd love them to not to do it.
Anybody want to make a motion on this? So this is a motion to recommend to city council, or a motion to work?
No, recommend to city council that they accept the streets.
I move that we recommend to city council that they accept this plan, the big conditions that Carolyn articulated, with regard to the trees.
There are second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, I want to see you both this time, thank you.
Wait, who was the second?
Mark.
Mark Blumberg.
So is it the sixteenth, or it's the fifteenth next week?
Sixteen.
Sixteenth, here?
Five o'clock for the first one.
And that's at J F K, right?
No.
Oh, it's five o'clock here?
Five o'clock is here, and J F K is the, I think it's six-thirty.
So you are, are we gonna, you want some people to come to both, or are you guys just gonna be picking up at six o'clock?
Well, we know it's a big time commitment, so our, our hope was that maybe there could be some split, so you wouldn't necessarily go to both. Some members could go to one, and others go to another one.
I have the P C P at seven that night, so I could count them.
I think you meant C P A.
C P C.
P C?
C P C.
Catherine, you're telling us something, you're gonna share it. Alright, so, so there's a five o'clock at city hall, and a six-thirty at J F K, so.
I can only attend at five o'clock.
Right, so I think if we go to one, that's, that's gonna be five, it's gonna repeat.
City hall right here.
Or, well.
This room.
Five o'clock in council chambers.
And it's an hour?
Hour and a half, about.
I can do the five o'clock.
Bring this down, we all have our stories. We might be short on the six-thirty.
I, that'll probably be easier for me to do six-thirty, because I'll be in Boston, so I'll be right back, so I'll probably do six-thirty.
That'd be great. I mean, whatever you guys can do, we know you guys are, schedules are busy, but, so we're trying to break it up.
And then, the next, so this is the only meeting we have in November.
Right.
Because of Thanksgiving, but our first meeting in December.
The eighth.
Is the eighth.
Wait, ten, eight, eight.
And that's the big meeting. We're gonna have Kensington.
Are they coming back for sure?
I, you know, I was told that, but now that I think about it, I need to see plans. I haven't seen plans.
Well, they have, they have two more weeks, right? One more week.
Well, two more weeks if they don't want us to review very well, because there is the holiday.
And then we had one other one. Didn't we have a continuation that night? Something else that was taking?
Well, there, there were two permits that weren't continued, but they didn't, they weren't ready for this meeting. So, it's the mobile station, Carmel Farms up in Florence, and possibly Spaces for Rent in the industrial park.
And have you got the plans for the mobile, for the space too?
We have the plans, yeah, but they, they need some modification, but they've submitted.
Which one in the industrial park?
Um, there's a storage facility, it's called Spaces for Rent. Self-storage, and they are adding two buildings, which is now to somewhere around fourteen, fifteen thousand square.
Next to the daycare center.
Yeah.
For Kensington, we've talked about doing the trip, so are people, wanna try to do a walk up to Kensington on Sunday? Maybe around, or earlier? I'm not sure if earlier's better.
I won't be around.
You won't be around?
I'm gone this weekend, but I've been up there so many times.
So you've been up there, you've walked, I've never walked it.
Oh, I've walked it three different times.
We could add a group.
Kensington? This is the one off of Glendale?
I think we did, didn't we?
I think that was there. We did the one, we did one at, we did one at the pond.
We did one, it was just up from the, from the land, it was like a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's gonna be, yeah, we did that.
Well, so, I mean, I, you want to do earlier Sunday, we do like a ten, get it over with, or do it noon, people have a.
My best shot at coming would be later, I think.
Oh, later, like, two, three?
No, I mean, like noon or one. Yeah.
Let's try noon. Noon or?
I'll have to check, I'll let you.
Alright, so let's say twelve o'clock, we can meet on Glendale Road at stake, the stake on the, and do we have to ask permission to walk through?
No, you guys are, because they have an application in front of you, the board has the authority. It's not trustable.
Do you, um, do you want me? Are you, are you?
Yeah, I'm gonna try.
Okay.
So where is it?
So we just want to say if we can show up, we'll show up, or if you.
It's right next to one twenty-three Glendale Road, or the stakes, there should be stakes with orange flags. Not in the road off, I mean, in the woods, there's a.
One twenty-three.
Yeah, there's a small, an arrow wooded section between two houses, and one of the houses is one twenty-three Glendale.
Okay.
And, and so in the woods near the road, there's an orange flag to stake.
If you get to the entrance of the landfill, you've gone too far.
Okay, that's all right.
Yeah.
Just back up.
You'll just back up, and you'll probably see one of us, you know, pulling it at some point.
This is on the thirteenth.
Uh, Sunday, thirteen, yeah.
Yeah.
And I imagine you should be wearing waterproof shoes.
Oh, yes.
It's pretty boggy, from what I understand, so.
I wonder I had trouble getting around Big Boil with it.
Alright, Catherine, CPC, what did it go last week?
Yeah, I just wanted to give everybody a little update, that we did not make any decisions last week. It was, it's just too complicated. What we're really trying to figure out is bonding, because we don't have a lot of money to give it. Save some money, do it way next round. Of course, the thrill that CPA vote passed and the real mandate.
Blowing colors.
It was fabulous. And we have two, we will have two elected members, but they won't join, the voted, the elected members, they won't join till January. So the present board will be deciding this night, the sixteenth, among the various, the six applications. And we just have to figure it all out, but I just want to let you know that we did decide last month.
Did you guys actually break up the wreck department in two, or is it still one big one?
No, no, I mean, the, the conversation, the way the conversation went was that we probably won't fund that piece of the playground. But maybe, you know, they'll have to do some fundraising, or they'll have to come back another time. But really asking them to do some of their own fundraising for it, and probably, we're not gonna be, anyway, nearly able to bond the whole thing.
Well, this is, so to me, the big surprise was a four hundred thousand dollar playground.
Yeah.
Four hundred thousand dollar playground.
I built this for three.
With a hundred thousand dollar pavilion. Mark, yeah, Mark, I want to see a bit of this.
Yeah, I mean, the interesting thing was in the application, and Maria came in with all these pictures of different kinds of playground, concession bathroom units, and some of them cost four hundred thousand, and some of them cost a hundred and forty thousand. And, you know, it's like, we, she says, well, we haven't decided yet. So their budget is very, very vague. So that, I don't think that's gonna be part of it.
Well, I, because I know, Mark, you've done it, I've done it, I'm not sure if anybody else here has done the capital improvements committee, Marilyn, has you ever sat on that?
Uh, no, I went to it.
Oh, you did, okay. Because it's staffed by, there's a couple city councils around. Capital improvements are every city department once here comes to, and asks for money for big ticket items, fire trucks, roofs, buildings, everything. The wreck department, without the CPA, would have had to go to the capital improvements. And the wreck department walked into capital improvements, which is staffed by city councilors, members of the public, planning board, planning staff. And they said, oh, we don't know what it's gonna cost, and we'll actually fund it. They would have gotten moved so far down the list, that it, it wouldn't have gone anywhere. In fact, I think they probably would have been too embarrassed to actually bring that to that committee, because they would have just been told, you know, no. So.
Well, that's, we got this going.
Good.
So do all the board slots come up for reappointment in January, along with the new, the voted elected members turning?
The, well, they're, Dave and the, they start.
Yeah, but I mean, all the board, you know, the people who are serving.
The wreck, I mean, wreck for.
Yeah, they deserve to appoint in January.
I don't know if they appoint in January.
It would seem odd that you wouldn't stagger things for common.
Well, like, do you mean like Mark?
Yeah, we always do March.
Yeah.
We do, yeah, just the wreck, because the wreck department gets one, the housing department gets one. When did they appoint their own?
Oh, but Jen's talking about sort of your subcommittee roles.
Right, right, right. Oh, yeah.
As opposed to, because you're on until you get replaced. Don't try to walk out.
Yeah, the city council president assigns city councilors to those.
In January?
In January, February, actually, yeah.
Oh, not, that's not the first thing on the, the first meeting? Oh, so that's like.
The first meeting is when they elect their president.
Their president.
They'll probably do it second meeting though, because they really, don't you think?
Well, sometimes it takes time to finesse it.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, I just wanted, just to follow up on the reporting to the planning board. It would be, I, I think the idea of having a regular time that the CPC reports to the planning board in the, one, early on, and when we're beginning, we've got the applications, and I think that's a good idea, but I would also like. Other liaisons, I think, other boards would be, you know, if we could have some sort of regular, like, I don't know what anybody else is doing on their liaison.
I have the trees.
I want to know, like, what's happening with the city.
And this is the old kids, and dogs getting run over.
Devin has just reported on the public transportation, which is great, it's very interesting.
Well, some of them, like, the one, so Frankie, Mark and I are on the technical review, which we can't report out of, because those are, they're gonna come to us.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Capital improvements.
Oh, it's funny that you, because I've never heard that.
Once we know a permit is coming before us, you're not supposed to discuss it. So technical review is people thinking about coming before us. They come to a technical review, which is staffed, I mean, early on Tuesday morning, three of us go, a fire, planning staff, D P W, members from everybody they'd have to get a permit from if they wanted to move forward. Gives them a first review, you know, so they, they know.
It's an education of them.
Yeah, they, they know if they're doing the right thing, if they're gonna run into issues, they can get it identified early. But because they may then come before us, we can't talk about it, anything that we know is gonna come before us.
As a whole board.
I'm really happy to know that you guys get up early some morning and go do that.
Right, so that, we can't report out of that. Capital improvements, you guys are gonna meet.
But don't the three of you do other things as well, or is that all your?
That's the one I'm on right now.
Randy, do you do the bike and pet?
I do that.
Yeah.
What do you do, Brandon?
I've been, I've been doing bike and pets, C H, C M C.
You love that early morning bike and pet.
I don't mind the early morning, in fact, I was glad that you made it earlier.
So some, yeah, every committee is different.
Everyone did them.
That would be good to hear from.
The last one, we didn't have a forum, so it was interesting, improvements.
They keep sort of canceling the E D meetings.
Jen's giving me the tangent sign, so I think what we're gonna say is, Jen's giving the tea.
You asked me to.
I know, I did, you were right. I think what we should do is, but it's a good idea. No, 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 but we're getting distracted. Your point is a good one, and I think we should add it to the agenda, or at the end of the meeting, it's a standing thing, who's had the meeting.
Report out.
Yeah, report out, let's just, we just add that to the end of the agenda, I think that's a good idea, so. That was worth the tangent one.
Yeah, and mine is maybe, the CPC is maybe more immediate, relevant.
However, you see the applications, but, but it's still useful.
So noon, Glendale Road, sixteenth, either five o'clock or six-thirty. The eighth will be a long meeting, so drink coffee and eat something. For some of you guys, I think Andrew and Devin, this might be your first meeting that you've got, I imagine, if, unless one or two of the applicants doesn't show up, or can't, this might be like eleven o'clock, so, if you're with me. So, is anybody not gonna be here on the end? I think they won't be.
I don't know, you're told, right?
That's right, I shouldn't have said anything.
Now that we know it's the weekend.
Yeah, that's right.
Do we meet on the twenty-second, then? In December.
Oh, yes, we'll meet, do we have anything? Oh, no, we don't, I think we decided not to meet on the twenty-second.
Just one meeting in?
One meeting in December, right.
We should have a meeting on the twenty-second.
Uh, I'm glad, Evan, these are.
Do we think that January will be regular Thursday, so twelve, thirty, twenty?
Yeah, yeah.
I moved it, we.
I know, I have to.